Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the President Village Board of Trustees, Village of Tinley Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, to be held here on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, beginning at 6:24 PM in the Council Chambers of Village Hall in Tinley Park, Illinois. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brenner. Trustee Mahoney?
Present.
Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, here.
President Glass.
We have a quorum. At this time, I'll turn it over to Trustee Shaw.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. I would like to make a motion to appoint Trustee Mueller as President Pro Tem for the Village Board Meeting dated August 6, 2025.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number one, looking for a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
Still moved. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for item number one?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number two, looking for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the regular Village Board Meeting held on July 15, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Sullivan. Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on item number two?
Roll call for item two, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number three, look, or, Trustee Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem. Consider adopting ordinance 2025-0-025, amending the rules and regulations for the Village of Tinley Park Civil Services Commission.
Do we have a motion for that item?
Still moved. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Please continue, Trustee Brady.
The ordinance defines the classifications plan and further modifies the civil service rules and regulations to allow for the return of former classified positions to return to the rank of sergeant. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Any questions or comments from the board? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for item number three?
Roll call for item three, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number four, looking for a motion to consider appointing Keith Sullivan to the position of Deputy Police Chief.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Keith has been in law enforcement since 1998 and joined Tinley Park Police Department 23 years ago. He has served as Division Police Commander of Special Programs and spent nearly 13 years as sergeant, of which he oversaw patrol for nine years and administration for four years. He's overseen numerous projects and initiatives in the police department and developed and executed special events operational and contingency plans for the Live Nation venue, among other achievements. Keith is a graduate of Northwestern University Center of Public Health, sorry, Center of Public Safety, Staff and Command, and the Executive Management Program. Keith's professional commitment to leadership and dedication to the vision of the mission of Tinley Park Police Department make him an outstanding candidate for this position. Please consider adopting, or, please consider appointing Keith Sullivan to the position of Deputy Police Chief effective August 6, 2025. We will have some questions and comments from the board, and then we will vote on it, and then we'll get you sworn in. Mr. Sullivan, any questions or comments from the board? Awesome. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number four?
Roll call for item four, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. So, at this time, I will ask that our village clerk, Nancy O'Connor, performs a swearing-in ceremony.
Trustee Sullivan.
You solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The offices of the Village of Tinley Park?
The offices of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Deputy Police Chief?
Deputy Police Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
Under the best of my ability.
(applause).
I want to say a few words? Sure.
Yeah, did you want to say a few words, and then we'll get your family up here?
I want to thank the mayor, the village board, my family's been supporting me for all these years, my colleagues of the police department, thank you for coming out today, and looking forward to getting started. Thank you. (applause).
Hold on. There you go. Hold on, you got it. (applause).
Well, congratulations, ma'am. Well, congratulations, ma'am. Congratulations, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Okay. Are you ready?
Got it. Thank you. (applause).
We'll move on to item number six. At this time, I'd look for a motion to consider appointing Jonathan Middleton to the position of Division Police Commander.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Jonathan began his career in law enforcement in 2011 when he joined the Tinley Park Police Department. Of his 14 years serving the citizens of Tinley Park, he has spent the last six years in the rank of Sergeant, leading patrol shifts in the Street Crime Suppression Unit. He has been responsible for DEA, TFO, NARCINT, TFO, CIT program, and an advanced CSI team, as well as numerous projects and initiatives in the police department. Jonathan is a graduate of the Northwestern University Center of Public Safety, Staff and Command. In addition, Jonathan has excelled in leading and managing patrol shifts, specialized units, and training programs, making him an outstanding candidate for this position. Please join me in considering the appointment of Jonathan Middleton to position of Division Police Commander effective August 6, 2025. Awesome. Any questions or comments from the board? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number six?
Roll call for item six, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask our village clerk, Nancy O'Connor, to...
We don't swear.
Oh, we don't swear, madam. My apologies.
(applause).
We do do photos, and we'll bring you up here and see if you want to say any words.
You can swear at them, you can't swear in. Swear 'em in.
I'd just say thank you, mayor, the board, village leadership, for putting your trust in me, my coworkers, looking forward to getting to work. Thank you.
All right, ready? Over here? What a nice picture. Got it. Thank you. (applause).
Ready? Ready? Got it. Thank you. (applause). Got it. Thank you. Got it. Thank you very much. Congratulations. (applause). Got it. Thank you. Got it. Thank you very much. Congratulations. (applause). 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 Got it.
This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Any questions or comments from the Board on item number eleven? There are none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for item number eleven?
Roll call for item eleven, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Moving on to item, or sorry, that motion carries. Moving on to item twelve, Trustee Brady.
Thank you, sir. Consider adopting Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash R dash zero-nine-one, approving a memorandum of agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One-Fifty.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Go ahead there.
Okay.
Trustee Brady?
We want you to consider approving memorandum agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, IUOE, and Local One-Fifty, to create a second ship. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole, prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Any questions or comments from the Board on item number twelve? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number twelve?
Roll call for item twelve, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number thirteen, Trustee Brady.
Thank you, sir. I'd like the Board to consider adopting Resolution, or ordinance, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-five dash O dash zero-twenty-four, amending certain sections of Title Three, Chapter thirty-three of the Tinley Park Village Code entitled Police Department pertaining to the creation of the position of Police Lieutenant.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Looking for a motion there?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Trustee Brady.
Second.
Second from Trustee Mahoney?
Consider modifying Chapter thirty-three of the municipal code to include the position of Police Lieutenant as appointed position. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole, held during, prior to this meeting, and the ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Any questions or comments from the Board on item number thirteen? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number thirteen?
Roll call for item thirteen, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item number fourteen, would you mind taking this one, Trustee Shaw?
Certainly. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution two-zero-two-five dash R dash zero-nine-eight, approving the purchase of annual maintenance of nine-one-one dispatch software from Central Square.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan.
The nine-one-one dispatch software provides critical functionality for the village's public safety departments. This resolution will provide the annual software maintenance for the computer-rated dispatch applications. The cost of this annual renewal is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, and is purchased through Central Square. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting, held prior to this meeting, and is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Any questions or comments from the Board on item number fourteen? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number fourteen?
Roll call for item fourteen, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item number fifteen, would you mind taking this one, Mr. Mahoney?
Not a problem. I move we consider adopting Resolution two-zero-two-five dash R dash zero-nine-zero between the Village of Tinley Park and Alicia O. &amp; Sons Company for Brookside Creek Stormwater Improvements Construction.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan, for the second.
Go ahead, Dennis. Thank you. Consider approving a proposal with Alicia O. &amp; Sons Company in a not-to-exceed amount of seven million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting, held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Any questions or comments about item number fifteen from the Village Board? There are none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for item number fifteen?
Roll call for item fifteen, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. We will move on to item number sixteen, receive comments from staff. Anyone from that table? Table over here? Let the record reflect, there was no comments from staff today. Item number seventeen, comments from the Board? Any Board members like to make any comments today?
I will.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. The floor is yours.
All right. I just want to remind everyone that we have our first movie in the square this Friday. We're featuring the movie Toy Story, and that starts at eight P.M. And then, we also have our Music in the Plaza series, that will be, the boy band, will be on Saturday. And then, our very first cultural music series with Smiley Tillman on Sunday, on August tenth, from one to three P.M. So, lots of fun things to do this weekend.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Welcome from Mr. Brady.
I'm set.
Madam Clerk.
Remind everybody not to ride their bicycles there.
We will move on to item number eighteen, as we will receive comments from the public. I will remind the public, as I did at the Cow, this is a special Village Board meeting. Comments to, from the public must be germane to the topics that we discussed here in the Village Board meeting. I will now open the floor up to comments from the public.
Raymond Violetto, resident of Tinley Park and a representative for Metropolitan Alliance of Police. I'm here to discuss about items on the agenda for three, four, six, and thirteen, which address command structure within the Police Department. At this time, the Tinley Park Police Department officers, represented by the Metropolitan Alliance of Police One-Ninety-two, signed a vote of no confidence against Chief Thomas Tilton, and requested he be immediately removed for the following reasons.
We could just pause you here for a second, sir?
The Tinley Park Police Department and its members feel that all other options have been exhausted.
Can I just pause you for a second? Just for a second, can I pause you? And...
So, Mr. Violetto, thank you very much. Just wanted to remind you that the public comment is limited to items on the agenda. A vote of no confidence is not specifically on the agenda, but I believe that the Board will allow you to speak as a one-time courtesy, but please note that the, specifically Section forty-three dash, or forty-three point zero-one of the, of the village's code states, "All public comment at special board meetings, special commission or special committee meetings must be germane to the items on that particular special meeting agenda." None of the items that you stated or cited actually deal with this vote of no confidence, but as stated, the Board, I believe, is going to allow you to continue, but only if this is not going to result in a repeated comment from all the people in the room. It would be, just for the sake of expediency, will you be speaking for all the other folks here in the room that you are representing?
Yes, I speak for them.
Okay.
So, we will allow you to continue? Go ahead and start the clock.
Since Mr. Thomas Tilton's appointment as Chief of Police on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the Tinley Park Police Department has experienced a steady decline in morale, strategic direction, and overall vision. Perhaps most concerning is growing damage to the department's public image and internal credibility. Mr. Tilton was initially hired as Deputy Chief in September, two thousand and twenty-one, despite lacking sufficient policing experience for the role, following his promotion to interim chief in September, two thousand and twenty-three, and subsequent appointment as chief. The department has experienced continued operational and structural issues, despite repeated efforts by the members of the Tinley Park Police Department to cooperate with Chief Tilton. These attempts have been met with continued escalating issues. Chief Tilton's communication of essential information to both supervisory and patrol staff has been inconsistent under the leadership, leading at times to operational uncertainty and reduced efficiency. Under his leadership, the department has experienced lack of direction, disregard for staff concerns, and inadequate or absent policy decisions. In light of the continued difficulties, it is our view that the leadership transition may be required to restore stability and support the department's future success. Chief Tilton has failed to provide any short-term goals or long-term strategic vision for the Tinley Park Police Department. His leadership has been marked by a consistent lack of communication, engagement, and accountability. There has been a noticeable absence of regular consultation with supervisory staff, and key decisions are frequently deferred to the Tinley Park Village Hall. This approach has led to a lack of unified leadership, which in turn has contributed to the organization's strained diminished morale across the department. Under the current leadership, the Police Department's reputation has experienced a noticeable decline, which appears to be impacting our ability to attract qualified applicants. Concerns regarding internal communications, leadership consistency, and morale have become known within the broader law enforcement community, contributing to a perception that the department may lack stability and long-term support. As a result, we have seen a marked decrease in the number of stilled applicants, making it more difficult to recruit and retain personnel necessary to maintain fully operational capacity. This ongoing staffing shortage presents a potential risk to the department's ability to effectively serve and protect the community. The vote of no confidence reflects a collective and well-considered concern regarding the current direction of the department under existing leadership. Over time, patterns have emerged that suggest challenges in decision-making, communication, and timely acquisition of necessary resources. Leadership responses to critical issues have relied heavily on external guidance, which has raised concerns about the department's operational autonomy and internal cohesiveness. This step is being taken only after multiple good faith efforts to raise and resolve these matters through established channels, provided unsuccessful. It is our belief that addressing these leadership challenges is essential for restoring a productive and supportive work environment. This vote is not driven by any personal agenda or ill will, rather it is a result of a series of ongoing concerns and observable patterns that have raised questions about the effectiveness of the department's current leadership. During this recent period, there have been growing concerns about the lack of consistent direction and accountability, which have coincided with a noticeable decline in the department's overall performance, morale, and external reputation. The following pages outline specific examples of documentation that illustrates the circumstances leading to the action of this decisive vote of no confidence. Therefore, the patrol officers of Tinley Park Police Department, in their capacity as members of the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter One-Ninety-two, is requesting the Village of Tinley Park Board of Trustees to take the appropriate action for further action. There are sixty-three items that are outlined in this vote of no confidence, and at this time, I'd like to give it to Village Manager Pat Carr. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shaw? Or not Mr. Shaw, Mr. Carr, I believe you had something that you wanted to respond with?
Is there any other public comment?
Do we want to wait until the end? Would anybody else like to address the Village Board? Let's wait for the...
I'll make, I'll make a comment.
Wait, no, there was another individual that would like to address the Board. Keep in mind that it should be germane to the Village Board meeting tonight.
Hello, everyone. On a lighter note, my name is Armando Alcizar. I'm the Risk Manager for Pete's Market. I want to make our presence known here. If you all didn't know, we're opening September third. Things are on schedule. We're excited, and I'd be more than willing to field any inquiries regarding the grand opening or the item on the agenda. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you for being here in Tinley Park.
Thank you.
Very excited.
Looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
Can't wait.
All right, Mr. Carr?
I'd like to make a statement to address the latest comment on the vote of no confidence. It is unfortunate that a no confidence vote was done tonight based on the personal economics and not in the best interest of the residents. The Village Leadership Team fully supports our Police Department and public safety personnel. The Village actions speak for themselves on that front, ensuring the Tinley Park Police Department has always had the resources it needs to keep our community safe. Since two thousand and nineteen, the Village has authorized thirteen additional patrol officers, five additional command-level positions, and is now at the highest staffing levels we've ever had. Any request for new technology or equipment, including a one-million-dollar-plus overhaul of the entire radio system, has always been approved and funded. To be clear, negotiations have been ongoing over the last fourteen months. In March, the Village offered the highest four-year pay increase in the history of the department, an offer exceeding increases that surrounding communities have received. This offer was made in hopes of some compromise in other areas, but ultimately was declined by the union. While we are committed to finalizing a new contract as timely as possible, we are simultaneously working to address serious concerns about the department's internal operations and overtime practices. The Village initiated an independent audit in early two thousand and twenty-four, following growing concerns about the escalating cost of police overtime, which has exceeded fifteen million over the past decade. To put this into perspective, last year, the Village spent almost two million in overtime, while Orland Park's overtime budget is only five hundred thousand. The findings of that audit confirm patterns of overtime abuse that have placed a substantial burden on Village's resources and taxpayers. As a department average, our officers make more than a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. The median household income in Tinley Park is about a hundred and three thousand. For the last several years, the Village has numerous patrol officers end up as the highest-paid employees in the village, with one officer exceeding two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Public safety is a top priority, and we are committed to ensuring that our police officers are well-supported. However, we also have a duty to taxpayers to manage resources responsibly. The audit made clear that changes are needed to restore accountability and efficiency in the use of overtime. In addition to overtime issues, Village Leadership has conducted an internal review of department's structure this past year, citing a noticeable breakdown in frontline leadership resulting in major internal investigation. This issue, these issues have contributed to a lack of cohesion within the department and hindered effective management. Every effort to with, every effort to manage within our rights of the contract has been met with grievances, fifteen for the past duration of the contract, which has contributed to the impasse in why the Village believes it's necessary to work through these matters. While the Village maintains a healthy financial position, future financial planning demands we carefully review allocation of resources we have. It is not financially sustainable to continue down the path we are headed if we want to keep our property taxes at a minimum to ensure a thriving community. It is unfortunate the union is attempting to resolve this publicly instead of meeting halfway at the bargaining table. These expressions of frustration are heard. We share in this sentiment. Negotiations always stir up emotions, but it is important to look past them to resolve the underlying issues. The Village remains committed to resolving the contract impasse in a manner that supports the dedicated men and women of the Tinley Park Police Department while restoring fiscal and operational integrity.
Thank you, Village Manager Carr.
Well said, Pat.
Well said, well said.
Mr. Mayor Proten? I know we're past staff.
Yeah, we are past. If you want to say a few words, we'll have it...
I, I'm not going to speak to any of the content of any of that. I just want to say, for my part, this is the second stunt that we've seen in recent times, and in both of them, things were said, and then people left the room. It's unfortunate that the well-thought-out and spoken comments that Pat Carr just made fell on deaf ears, at least in the moment.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw.
Thank you.
At this time, would anybody else like to address the public? All right, we will close public comment entirely at this time, and we will move on to item number nineteen. I will look for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body, its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salaries, schedules for one or more classes of employees, or B, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or intimate, in which a case of bias for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting, and C, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll move.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for adjournment to executive session?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
We are adjourned.